We're the only, we're the only department, well, now we're that's fully staffed in the county.
You know that. That's good.
Not even highway patrol can force staff it.
What's that?
Not even highway patrol could be forced in, it's crazy.
Let's get started.
Yep.
Ben says she wants to go over with.
If you have seven oh two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, let the roll call show. The councilman Hartkey, councilman Zent, Mayor Highsmith are present. Uh, councilman Dimick and council settler have called in with them able to. To make it today. We do have a quorum. Then I have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Been moved to prove the agenda, may I have a second? Been moved by councilman Zent, second by councilman Hartkey, we approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is the same. Motion passed, is proved as presented, any communication from citizens? Anybody online? Negative. None being. The consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by councilman Zent, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by councilman Hartkey. Any discussion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, opposed the same. Motion approved, all in affirmative. Uh, we have nothing scheduled for a public hearing, uh. Res- down to resolution twenty-three dash zero one six. F C emergency operation. Uh, chief, could you enlighten us on that?
Uh, this is the. Update to the Fremont County Emergency Operations Plan, that's countywide, signed by. Um, all entities within Fremont County, and this resolution is just acknowledging the update. From the last version dated December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. To the most current rendition of the emergency operations plan that was included in the packet as well, is any questions?
The main difference, I believe, chief, was cybersecurity, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's. The change that brought up this.
Which we had a meeting with, uh, uh, CISA, I believe is the, how you say it, the acronym. Um, but, uh. What we have in. Shoshone was above their expectations for any town, but. We're ahead of the game as far as our cybersecurity in Fremont.
They were very pleased with what.
I believe you were at that meeting too.
It was, yes, it was, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the capabilities that we do have here is. Pretty impressive, they said.
So, yeah. Especially for Minnesota, midsize, midside Minnesota, Wyoming. It was, uh, yeah. Chris got a lot of added boys from, uh, uh, procedures and stuff that has been implemented. But they were very happy with team Shoshone.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Did we ever, did I get a motion?
Yeah.
No, you asked me to expand.
I have a kind of a motion to approve. Uh. Resolution twenty-three dash oh one six F C emergency operation.
I'll make the motion.
Been moved by councilman Hartkey, second by councilman Zent, any further discussion? None being, all in favor say aye. Aye, same, motion passed, all in the affirmative. Building permit, confidence builders. Uh, you wanna bring us up to speed on that a little bit? Wanna do that, Clark?
I gotta pull up here, I.
Okay.
So, this was the original lot where I was gonna build. Um, three years ago, like, we, two years ago, we had passed. Our ability permit for them to dig the foundation for what I was gonna build as a house. Um, but with the recent changes in, uh. State of the economy, I decided not to at this time. Pursuit at that time. And released it, so they. Uh, are looking at constructing a. Multi-family unit.
Triplex.
Triplex. In the area which is zone R three, which allows for that type of construction.
And so workforce. Workforce housing. Which is something we do need in Shoshone. This is. I, I've reviewed it, I. It, uh. They're gonna use existing, what they've already started and then add on to that. It's gonna be over twenty-seven hundred square feet, triplex each unit. Over nine hundred square feet, which also includes a laundry, they're both two-bedroom, two-bath and a laundry. Um, pretty good, pretty good look and reasonable. Two bedroom, one bath, I say that the way, yeah, yeah, okay, two bedroom, one bath, but, yeah. Uh, the floor plan looks similar to what, what I did. Few years back. Fifteen years back, whatever, in River, Riverton. Looks functional, something the town needs. Can I motion to approve?
I'm motion.
Been moved by councilman Hartkey, can I get a second?
Second.
Been seconded by councilman Zent, any further discussion? Then being all in favor, say aye.
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 I need to abstain.
Uh. Noted councilman Zen abstained, I believe, that. Dude, one is still, uh. We, that's a quorum for us, let's still. So, to the votes two to all with one abstention, motion passed.
Yep.
Move on down to new business, please, vehicle bid, chief. Your category.
This is part of the vehicle replacement plan that we have implemented. So this is the open period for allocations of orders for fleet vehicles. Uh, this is for a. Uh, Tahoe, which would replace the current twenty nineteen Durango. That would be converted into a town travel car. Um. The expected delivery is sometime. Around. Mid next year, mid to early next year, however, with the notify with the recent strike, that could be pushed out further. So. I don't know when it will arrive, sometime next year. Um, and then there's, as with anything with the police stuff, uh, it's still a three to six month. Lead time between arrival of the vehicle and then being put into actual active use, so. Uh, we'd anticipate if everything went. Precisely as it would go probably. This time next year is when it would actually be in active service.
If I understand correctly, to chief, if we. They only do it once a year now. They order the special vehicles. If we don't do it now, puts us down.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yes.
And I, of note, um, the price from the previous toddler we did order is about seven thousand dollars more on this one. Um, same exact vehicle, obviously newer, but, um. The retail price that we would pay. Jim would pay specifically would probably be close to eighty thousand dollars if you went to buy it on the street as a person, because of the upcharge that you don't pay with the fleet pricing, so. Crazy times we live in. And all the specs I, I, or including the council package, there's any questions, but it's pretty much like the other toddler we have as far as the specs on them. Not other seats, we don't have, uh, you know, heated cooled, uh, air-conditioned, uh. Uh, massaging chairs or anything like that.
I'm surprised they don't have a block heater.
Well, they don't need them anymore anyways.
Okay, they say so.
Well, after last winter, I don't know so much, but. It does have an auto start, so that is.
Okay.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Been moved by councilman Hartkey, second by councilman Zan. Any further discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is the same, motion passed off and they affirm. Department head report, quarterly report, financial report. Word, please.
Hey.
Do you need the speaker?
You want me to put it up? That's what.
Doesn't matter. Okay, uh, the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-four financial report has been finalized and posted online. To summarize, our revenues during the first quarter were thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars over budget projections. Expenditures for payroll-related expenditure or expenses overall during the first quarter were within budget. Discretionary expenditures across all departments were considerably under budget for the first quarter. However, I expect the second quarter expenditures will exceed budget on a quarterly basis, but remain within the year-to-date budget projections. Um, looking forward, revenues in the second quarter are expected to fall compared with the first quarter. But I expect the second quarter to be flat or still slightly above the quarterly budget projections. There's no need to adjust revenue upwards for increased expenditures, however, I request the expenditure line. Item for contract with services. Ten dash forty-four dash one twenty be increased from three thousand to nine thousand. This is due to expected contracted cleaning services for town hall. As well as the need to hire a moving company to assist with the transfer of assets and equipment into the new town hall building. The Wildstar, although budgeted for drawdown for various projects. Has not been affected as our revenues over expenditures for the first quarter were a positive seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. While so early in the budget year, I expect the drawdown from, uh, Wildstar will be much less than initially projected by the year end. Questions?
So, the financially, the town is doing better than it anticipated, we're taking, bringing in a little more revenue.
Yep.
Um, part of that, would that be sales tax revenue?
So. Gotta pull up on the screen, um. Main ones were interest income because the Wildstar being. Above projections and continued growth there. Uh, supplemental funding was, we actually received more than. We anticipated, which is good.
About three thousand.
And then the rest of the line items were pretty straight, and then fines and fees and. Surcharges and court fees, uh, contribute significantly to that increase.
Any questions for the clerk, any questions for the clerk? Thanks a lot, appreciate it, none being. Uh. Could our director of public works give us a report?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Highsmith. Councilmembers.
Nice to see you, Mr. Quiver.
Yeah. Well. We're, we're busy with our, working on our, um. Dosing system down into the glue. Our, uh. Electrician, he ordered some. Motor start contactors that haven't come in yet. So. We haven't been able to test our pumps. To see which. To see how many we may need to replace. From this last time when it, when those, uh. Tanks all filled up with sewage. So I don't know what, what's burnt out, what's not burnt out. I know, all I know is the contactors froze. And so. That's where we stand on here, we got everything just about cleaned up. And Bart has been testing the lines to see what's broke. Some of them, some of my pros. I'm thinking when they were first installed. They've been broke. They're, they're busy winterizing the. Equipment and just getting ready. They had the sprinkler systems blown out. The city parks. The senior housing. They're waiting on the, I think the rodeo grounds did their own. That's, are they gonna do their own? Mike's been trying to get in contact with them. And there'll be. The motel will. Shut down on the first. And that's when we'll shut those ones off. They'll, they'll be gonna shut down for the winter. They, according to them, they spent too much on. Heating, the heating. Bill last year.
Yeah.
I think they're four thousand a month, somewhere. So they're gonna shut down on November first, and we'll. Turn off the water over there. Now on this, uh, this, this one back here. On Muskrat. Number eight. The building's back, down here. That bad water you stole, the bank now owns. Um. I spoke with Joel here about the water. Number six and number eight were connected. And in the ordinances. Sixteen seventeen thirty-one. There, there is not supposed to be more than one property owner, service line. Each, each property should have its own service line. So I went on ahead and disconnected that one and. Capt it, shutting off number eight. And I've been working with Dustin out of B and M Construction. And today he informed me. That the bank. Said, well, why did the. Town do that, have the town hook it back up, they have a. Permit and the easement for that. But this was done way before my time, so I have. I haven't the slightest idea. As to. Where we go from here. Do you want me to? Put a. Meter and curb stop in, right where I disconnected it? To put that water in? But then that would be. If, if, um. We do that, then there'd be three properties on that. Because when I spoke with Dustin today, he said. That there was, when he dug up that line and put a curb stop in. Under that building, he said, there's, he told me, he said, there's another T under there, Mike, and that water line runs that way. He said, I think it goes towards that back building, that biggest building over there. Where they had their sound blasters. He, so I, I don't know. It does or not?
I'll, I'll run out with you tomorrow morning, and we can take a. Take a, take a look at that, but not only the different properties, different property owners. And then you can't. And have, or should, I mean, can't, because they do, you should not have, they all should be have their separate meters, separate properties. And. Can't daisy chain them in, in line.
So that's, that's where I stand on, and the, that bigger building has a. It has a fire hydrant, so there's, there's a six-inch line. Oh. There's a. We found a valve over there. That, we're gonna try to see if we can trace that line, that, that's the valve that goes to that. Six inch line forty. Cause there's a fire hydrant behind that building. And so. Me and Mike found it, are trying to get that one line tracer going. So we can. See if that, if that one does go there. For, cause for them to hook up to. Individual. I think it would be easier for them to hook to that six inch line. Rather than boring all the way across. Under the railroad tracks to first street.
So, yeah, we need to look at ownership of the lines and, and everything else, and you. You see exactly. Sick who owns the six inch line, you know? Where, where does the city? Where are, where is our ownerships?
Yeah.
Uh, stop and stuff like that, but yeah.
Everything is right here, crossroads by the, uh. By the postops.
Okay.
It looks like it runs diagonal, not straight along Muskrat. When, when we were checking it, me and Dustin.
Okay.
But yeah, that's what Dustin told me today when I spoke with him. About that. Bank's kind of pushing back now. So. Any questions? Right, that's all I have.
Great, appreciate it, thanks a lot, Mike. Let me circle back just a second, I forgot to ask, uh. We had a request to. To raise our budget. And I moved forward without us. Without a student at the request, I believe they've raised the budget nine thousand dollars, is that correct?
To nine thousand from three.
From three to nine thousand, uh. For contract services ten dash forty-four dash one twenty, we'd like to increase that budget line from three thousand dollars to nine thousand dollars. But we'd actually, we need to make a motion to make that approval, to make that official.
What is that for?
That, that was for expenditure, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, that was for the, um, contract cleaning for, um. Oh, okay. Hiring the moving people and. Um.
And contract clean.
Yeah.
Those two items, correct?
Right.
Cleaning what?
Cleaning town hall.
This one or? That one?
Both.
Oh, that's my question.
Both, yeah. Both.
And conveniently, the public works department decides they're too busy to help us move.
So we did get.
Mike wants to hire two more people, but he's not busy. They're, they're really busy right now, so, yeah, there they are, swam, swimming. And we ran our summer help to. Where we budget, we ran out of budget with, with our summer help also.
What was that line, I have to begin?
At ten dash forty-four. Dash one twenty contracted services.
I move that we. Increase wide items ten dash forty-four dash one twenty contract. Expenses. Up to nine thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, we. Increase our, our budget line for contract services. And, and cleaning. Uh, I don't have the number for me, from three thousand to nine thousand dollars, the ten dash forty-four. Uh, dash one twenty. Any further discussion? Open. Moving, yeah, second by councilman Hartkey, any, any further discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same. Motion, all in the affirmative. Uh. You have anything, Tammy, that you'd like to talk about?
Nothing here, council, nothing.
Uh. Shooting complex, we're, we're sort of moving along, twentieth, the. The task force had a Zoom meeting that actually gave us some, some guidance on, on their expectations that better outlines what we've had in the past, so. Like say Fremont County is moving forward, looking at multiple sites, uh. Uh. And I'll keep the town, I'll get the council. Uh. In the loop, I know we, we do have a meet, their next meeting's in, uh, pow. Uh. Sewer line expansion, we're still waiting on. On some parts of lift stations, is that correct?
I believe we're expected to. Allegedly. Receive them around the end of November. Um. But that's still. Most current update is, uh, I believe November twenty-first, they're expected to arrive. But I don't have any. Dates on when that will actually go from arrival to being placed in construction.
I believe Barnum's gonna show up a day.
This next week, they're supposed to show up.
And, and complete. Some of the other work, everything but that, I, I, I guess.
That's my understanding.
That was my understanding, so they should show up there.
So there's still a chance that it could be done before the end of the year.
I'm assuming they'll repair Maple Street.
That'll probably be next year.
You don't think they're gonna get that this year?
I would want them to do it this year.
Okay.
By the time they get to it, it's gonna be there, and it's not gonna be a good job, so.
Yeah. I think they were intended to, with the snowstorm may stop that. Uh. The Halloween barbecue is Saturday, the Saturday. Uh, since five P M, five P M to seven P M, is that correct?
Yeah.
We're gonna have hamburgers, hot dogs, free to the public. Come on down, we'll have a costume contest that we always have had in the past, and, uh. I hope everybody. Get a lot of people show up. Come, come enjoy, it's supposed to be cool.
Yep.
It's supposed to be cool in the twenties, maybe with a little bit of wind, may not be our best temperature, but it's Halloween, and it seems to do it every year to us.
So we'll have some fires.
We will have the, we will have the bar warm up as always. And, but, uh, should be. Uh, should be good brawl. Anybody ha- else have anything they would like to add?
Uh, just on the grant front, um. So. Our. Tap projects have been finalized, and we were. Notified we were successful in one of two. So we were successful on the. Uh, bigger of the two, which is the. Sidewalk project to the west of town, which will bring sidewalks on the north and south side of Second Street and extend them all the way out to the medical clinic and the rest area.
That's awesome.
As well as putting a crosswalk for safety. Uh, the determining factor on the second grant was that the cost of it and the ability of the town to. Options that they provided would. For safety, that's one of the big components of routes to schools of safety, and they considered that more of a dominant project for safety school routes than. The street lights down there on the north end of town that they suggest that we look at doing, um. A, not a power pole, but a, a pole that's pre-lit with, uh. Um. Solar energy. And provides the lighting that way, uh, cheaper, more cost-effective and easier to install, so. That's something that I believe I can maybe work with the school on, seeing if we can come up some solutions for that.
They had that. Once upon a time at this senior housing. And it was removed.
All right. That's what.
I'm just.
Yeah.
I don't know why, or. Yeah, I think, I thought it went up to Dubois, somebody got put up in Dubois someplace, but that's all I know about it. That was twenty years ago, and built.
Well, oh, yeah, we're not gonna give up on the lighting.
No, it's no. You know, I. I mean, I'm pleased that we got at least one this year, um, I think that will. You know, visually improve the town, but I think safety-wise, because right now. We have kids who are living that, when they walk into town, they're walking on the street, because there's nowhere to actually walk. Cause it's the way it curves, the ground, especially in the wear time. And they're actually walking on, on the roadway, and so I think that will definitely benefit that.
So wherever the crosswalk be.
It's supposed to be right across the park.
Okay, not one of these intersection.
No.
There used to be one there.
There used to be.
Yeah.
And that's something that. You know, we're still working with White dot, um, um, getting things done. They feel, I think, that we have too many crosswalks in town, apparently, for our town, seriously.
So they need to count the kids after school, wow.
I think we have too many.
Okay.
But, you know, I think the town can hire a crossing guard, and, um, we can make you a jacket and a stop sign. But, yeah.
School used to have. Aids to that before after schooling.
Yeah, they do it, Lander.
They used to do it right over here.
Yeah.
When I first moved in here.
Yes. So that still might be something that maybe. Other ways we can.
Yeah, because it gives the crossing just anywhere on this road. Is that something that goes through this school?
Uh, yeah, would.
Usually, okay.
But. There's other options they can do to mitigate that, but, but yeah, once we get a crosswalk right there. That should be where they cross back and forth, not just running across the highway like they do now. And then, um.
But it's a step forward.
Yeah, it's, it's still. Something good for the town, and it's something that the west or the east side of town could use, because it will get curbing gutter all the way out there, and it will be, uh, continuing on that front. Could use, cause it will give curb and gutter all the way out there and it will be uh continuing on that front, so.
What was the amount of that grant?
Uh six hundred and seventy three thousand. Uh this grant will follow our water project grant, so it's structured in a way, it's not hitting us all at once, like I've talked about in the past, it's, it's. Our next series, phase three, if you will, of our grants that are coming in, so that'll be the first of our phase three grants. That will come half, these ones have been completed. I believe we have till December thirty first, twenty twenty six, so we have a lot of time.
So now that's a, that'll be a good addition.
Yeah.
To your town, you know, you, it'll, it'll provide safety and it'll. It would, would, well, the coast will come in, so, so it's improvement, we'll just keep trying to, to do more.
Did you say it's specifically the east end of town?
Yes, what's that? And the last thing, just real quick, uh I think has been from public comment and uh. Wouldn't say complaining, I'd just say legitimate comments and. Useful critiquing, so we are gonna place a cover on the pergola at the town plaza as well as insulation of a propane. Grill. So that will be open to the public and they just have to hook up their own propane and. They can grill or they can come to the town and rent one, you can provide that for parties or whatever. And that will provide cover for the winter for snow and rain, keep it dry as well as um a. Better cooking utensil that can be utilized or appliance that can be utilized, so. That will hopefully be done sometime before spring.
Anything else? If none being, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Been moved by Councilman Harkey to adjourn second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Zen, any further discussion, none being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same. Meeting adjourned seven thirty four.